You know, what can we do? How can we get it fixed? What's it gonna cost? Somebody, bring somebody down here. And after conversations with that guy and Charlie, he told us what to do to test so that he could, we videoed that so that he could see what was happening. And he believes that it is bearings going out. And he sent us the estimate for, to have all that stuff done. And after conversation with Charlie, we figured out that the hopper has to come off of the machine in order to get to the bearings and the other working parts. And that hopper is, I'm gonna use the wrong word here, is counterweighted. And, and we don't have the tools to replace it correctly. So they do have a service technician who will come. And, and I think you all have these estimates. One of those estimates is for the service truck miles, travel, labor, fuel, the visit, and the onsite labor. And the other estimate is for the parts. And we don't know exactly what parts we're gonna need, but I'd like permission to order all that. And we'll either send it back or we'll keep it for future repairs. But the, the parts are way less than the labor. So.
I do not have any estimates.
I do not either.
Okay, well, the...
Yeah, I have no estimates.
Okay. The service truck...
I got them electronically.
They're, they're on Google Drive.
Oh, that's where I'm looking. Oh, there it is. Okay, never mind.
All right, well, the service and the labor was thirty-four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. And the parts were sixteen-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. So we're talking seven thousand dollars to fix the thing. And Vicki did some research to figure out what we spent on it. And what we came up with was that it cost about two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars. So, and, and probably out of everything that we do here at City Hall, I get more calls about trash and leaves and limbs than anything else.
It was processed in April of thirteen.
So, and it's, it's an operations and maintenance kind of thing. It's just expensive and I want y'all to be aware of it. I mean, I, you know, I don't, I don't, there's no need for a resolution or anything. I just want y'all to either, either tell me that you want to do it or that you don't.
I think we should do it.
I do too.
I agree. I second that.
I think we need it operational.
Okay, all right. We'll move on then to the property cleanup. Vicki, you ready?
Yes, it's Ryan on Ashville. Okay, all right. We had talked about the funding for the property cleanup at a couple of the other meetings. And Brian and I have reconciled all of our records to see what is outstanding on the accounts receivable for property cleanups. And you should have that report on the Google Drive. He is gonna do an update on those receivables so he can tell you where they are in the legal process. Okay, Brian?
All right, you, y'all have the list?
Yes.
Okay. If you look, we have one, two, three, four of them that are in the city attorney's office as we speak. One for eight hundred dollars, one for twelve hundred, one for ten thousand, seven sixteen, and one for fifty-four thirty-seven. Okay? The rest of those are, we're gonna do two lanes tonight. And the rest of those have, one of them has twelve months. So it'll have six more months before it goes to city attorney. And the rest of them have eight months. So they'll have eight more months before they go.
Okay. And when they go, they go up for sale, is that right? For auction?
Well, they, they go to the city attorney's office at fifteen months. And he has, he has three months to prepare his legals and all that stuff and advertise and do what he does. Then they go up for sale. So it's a total of eighteen months.
Okay. So I guess what we need to decide is if we need to allocate some money for this fund. Because right now, in the checking account, there is, let me see where it is on the sheet, two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and three cents in that account. And then I have that reminder on there that when there are funds available in this account, we have to pay that thirty-five-hundred-dollar tax for the general fund for those demolitions that we did. So I think the decision we need to make is going forward, do we need to allocate some money from one cent sales tax for property cleanup to go into property cleanup checking account? And I put a note on here just to remind you that the last transfer was, um...
Twenty-sixteen.
March of two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah.
And it was twenty thousand dollars was when we made the last allocation.
Well, if we're gonna pay Brian to, to do what he's doing, he needs some funds to do what he does.
Right.
No brainer, we got to move some money.
Right. And we'll have to do it at a council meeting so that we have the, in the minutes. We'll have to vote on it and approve it to make that allocation. On this finance committee meeting agenda, that it would come from one cent sales tax. And there is a number that says transfer to a property cleanup condemnation fund. And then it would, you know, be deposited into that checking account.
Can, can I add a final statement to this before you decide?
Sure.
Okay. Since I started this job ten years ago, we have not once come before city council and asked for money. We haven't had to. It's, it's regenerated itself. And we've worked from those funds and worked from those funds. And we just happened to get low this year. We've got funds gonna come back in eventually. I would suggest, I mean, it's certainly up to the council and the mayor to cover the thirty-five hundred. And if you want to allocate anymore, that's fine. But it's just, you know, basically cover the thirty-five hundred. That's it.
But if, like Mike said though, if you're gonna have money for operations until that happens...
That's what I said. If y'all certainly want to allocate more, that's fine. We, we can, you know, I can sure use.
Right.
Vicki, when, when we do get money back, where does it go?
Into that property cleanup fund. It'll go towards things outstanding, whichever outstanding invoice it goes to. It'll go towards that invoice. And then it'll go back into that fund.
And that's what we've been working off of for the last ten years. We've just been regenerating each year and each year. And we, we, you know, in the last ten years, we've used twenty thousand dollars. I mean, it's, I, I do a lot with a little. And I get a lot done through working with the property owners their sales. Certainly, I've got, I've got six that'll, that you will see before June. And I've already sent another three or four. But you won't ever see those because they are in the process of cleaning them up or have already cleaned it up.
No, I, I don't think there's any question about how you're working, Brian. You're doing a great job. And whoever said it, you need the money to operate on them. So we need to take care of it.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
We also need to, if we have available city resources that can do some of this work, we need to look into doing that to save the, the money as well.
I agree.
I, I know Paige just said that we don't have enough resources to do it all the time. But if we, you know, let's look at it case by case. And if the city's slow and we've got the available resources, let's do it in-house.
And we do have some, some times like that. I, you know, I'm praying that there's no storm tonight because we're still not finished cleaning up from the last storm we had at Easter. But, but that's when, whenever Brian needs some help, all he has to do is holler and we'll, we'll come.
Energy has already sent out a notice that they're expecting outage.
Yeah.
One more addition, since I, I don't, I don't know if this, you know, come up in the city council or not, and this may help with your thought processes. But the ADEQ recently sent a mayor letter and she forwarded it to me. And it's not really gonna slow down anything on the single-family dwellings. But we'd be limited to doing one per city block per year. So that's nothing excessive there except I'm gonna have to start tracking where we do these things and not put two in one city block in one year. Now, on a commercial building cleanup, we're gonna have to have the bid in hand and come to city council and ask for the resolution. And then we will have to fill out the contractor and myself and the asbestos inspector. I'm hoping to go get that license. And we can do that in-house. We will get together, fill out this form, and it'll be a ten-day wait before we can do anything. So they've added that. We've gotta keep that in mind.
Any other questions?
So is there an amount that we need to be considering moving into this fund?
I mean, that's, it would just be a collective decision. You can see that we ran off of twenty thousand dollars since March of two thousand and sixteen. So that would just be a decision, you know, and like we said, when we do get other funding in from those payments, they will go in there. So it'll just be your decision how much you want to fund it. Because, you know, thirty-five hundred, whatever we put in, is gonna come out.
Mayor Chen?
What did I miss?
Is she there?
I'm here.
Oh, okay, okay.
Nada's trying to talk and nobody can hear her.
I heard her.
Okay, I, I couldn't hear anything she said.
Do y'all have a suggestion on how much you want to do? And do, do you want it, I mean, it'll have, like I said, it'll have to be a council meeting agenda. Late meeting? Or do you want to add it to tonight's meeting?
Just, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Brian, I know you say that there are some that are at the city attorney's office now. Do you have an idea on the time that we're looking at to actually get funds as a result of those actions that are currently at the city attorney's office?
I have received the paperwork on those that Mr. Barton has gone through. And I, I'm not sure of the timeline before the, the judge can hear it due to this COVID-nineteen and everything. There, there's no telling.
Okay, okay. We have, what, thirty-five hundred dollars in invoices to pay right now out of that account? Is that what I understood?
That's where we had, we paid for a couple of demolitions back in January. And the fund didn't have enough money. And so we made a transfer from the general fund to cover it. But we've got to pay the general fund back.
Right, and that's thirty-five hundred dollars, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I mean, what, is it worth considering saying we look at maybe five thousand dollars to see if that would tide us over until we can collect on some of these that are in the works?
I was thinking more of considering maybe ten thousand. And because we're just about depleted with the thirty-five hundred that's fixed to pay out if we go five.
Yeah, because that would just leave you seventeen hundred dollars.
Nada, do you want to weigh in on that?
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Right. I had to click a button. I, I think that would be a fair amount because pending the lane collections and knowing that demolitions have to come to you for pre-approval anyway, that, that should take care of anything that Brian has pending on the books.
Now, what amount is that, Nada?
I think Michael recommended five thousand.
That'll leave you seventeen hundred.
You think that's enough? Even considering that district court is out and
Brian, with the cases that you have on the books and in process, would that be adequate?
Again, I say, hopefully I can get these property owners to clean it up their sales. And that's always been the goal of, of property inspection and the city council for the last ten years, to try to get them to do it their sales without us. I mean, it's a last-stitch deal to go in and tear these things down. And, and the city tax dollars have to pay for them. That's, that's what we do not want. So I will, I will do what I can and, and however long it takes to get these things done with the least amount of money possible.
That just sounds like it's, five thousand just sounds like it's cutting it a little too thin for me.
Yeah. Vicki, would we, if we put like ten thousand into the account and the account builds up to an amount that we think is excessive, could we not take money back out of the account?
Yes, sir.
Put it wherever?
You sure can. You can put it back.
I would suggest ten thousand.
Okay. Does everybody, anybody have a...
Yes.
Y'all want to add on that? To make it...
Can we add it to the agenda tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we'll add it to the agenda.
Okay. And I have it written out on here. And I'll verbally say it when we get to that point where we, what line item and find it'll come out of. It'll be what's on this agenda.
Okay.
And then get that approval in those minutes. Thank you.
So is this a long, is this a long till the MEDC?
No.
It'll be for operations for the property cleanup. And it'll go into the property cleanup checking. And like Dr. Lassiter said, if it, if at a point we start getting money back from these other properties and this fund builds up in a balance and you want to put money back, with all the funding for this that's come from the city has come from one cent sales tax. Then at that point, you could put money back in one cent sales tax if you choose to. But this'll be for operations out of that property cleanup fund.
So, so the property cleanup fund is not a part of the MEDC budget? Or is it part of our budget?
It's our budget.
It is the city, it is in the city's accounts, Cedric. And it's, all of the funds that you're allocating and appropriate, all of the invoices have to go through the finance office. They're paid out of the finance office. And it is only for cleanup from the two ordinances, either the weed lot or the distance property. That is it. No other expenses at all are requested out of those funds.
Right. And then when Brian brings, has invoices, he brings them here. And we also have those, we invoice them in our system. And that's why he and I reconcile to match. So that our records match.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. The third thing on the agenda is I sent you out a copy of an updated twenty-twenty one cent nineteen ninety-eight one cent sales tax document with revisions from the January twenty-eighth and March thirty-first council meeting. So that you can have a current amount down at the bottom of that budget of unallocated funds. So those are all the updates through, through those two, through March. If you have any questions about any of that, you can, you know, if you don't have them, if you have them later, you can, you can let me know. I'll be glad to help you. And that's it. Unless anybody has anything.
I don't guess we've heard anything from the engineer on the lake levee?
Well, I, I talked to him before COVID-nineteen. And he was, he was getting the surveyor ready to go. And, you know, and I don't, I don't know what's happened since all that. I mean, surveying is something you can do generally in isolation. So I hope that that's being done. I haven't heard anything lately. Y'all ready to start, council?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, we're a few minutes late, so it's six-ten. And we'll call, call the meeting to order. Jess, would you call the roll, please?
Joe Meeks?
Here.
Cedric Leonard?
Here.
Michael James?
Here.
Al Pierre?
Here.
Jack Lassiter?
Here.
Greg McCray?
Here.
Mike Wiggly?
Here.
And Claudia Hartness?
Here.
Okay. Is Brian around, Nada?
He's... Yeah.
Yeah, okay. He's gonna give our invocation. And then we'll stand for that and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I solemnly endorse Lord God. We thank you, Lord, for the many mercies and blessings that you bestow upon us and for the blood of your son. We ask that all our actions tend to thy glory, Lord. We ask that you continue your watch, care, and protection over us. Forgive us, Lord, where we fail thee. In your son's precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Good man.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Make sure my laptop's not gonna fall off. All right, the first item on the agenda is the approval of council minutes from February of this year, February twenty-fifth.
A move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Jess, would you call the roll?
Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James? Michael James?
He is muted.
Sorry, I had to unmute. Yes, sorry.
I'll keep you here.
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Greg McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Okay. Now we have approval of minutes for March, minutes of twenty-twenty, March thirty-first.
Motion makes it.
Thank you. Take a second. Okay, we call the roll, Jess.
Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Greg McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
And Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any unfinished business other than what we have? All right, then we're gonna start with a resolution to amend ordinance number four-ninety-three and seven-seventy scheduled rates for water. This will be the second reading. Can I get someone to introduce it?
I will.
I'll introduce it. And move, we suspend the rolls and read by title only.
Thank you, sir. Cedric, do you want a second?
Second.
Mr. Barton?
An ordinance further amending section two of ordinance number four-nine-three and seven-seven-zero of the city of Monticello as previously amended establishing schedules of rates of change, of charges to be paid for water supply in the city's water system, declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question. I'm new again. I thought we were going to put in the sprinkler system information. Does that come later or...
Well, we can put it in this one. I actually remembered that and then forgot it when I reread this last week.
So we'll get it for the third reading?
We can do that.
Okay, that'll be fine.
The rate for water association's a dollar sixty-seven. I think I remember you saying the cost for us producing water is a dollar sixty-two. Is that gonna be enough considering inflation?
That's why we're doing three readings. I mean, it's a, it's a five percent increase, I believe.
Yes.
Four and a half percent. It's, I kept the increases consistent. So we can, we can go up. It's just...
I thought we'd agreed to look at this within the next year after it was implemented.
We did.
We have to...
Yeah, so, I mean, you said something about, is that enough for inflation? You know, we can look at it next year and see then.
That's correct.
And section two G says the rates will, it should say, be reviewed annually by the city council on or before April first of each year, so.
Right, so that's over the inflation part.
Okay, so you're satisfied, Mr. Wiggly?
Yes, and just to remind me, what is, what are they, what are they currently paying?
Oh, ninety-seven cents per thousand gallons.
Oh, okay. All right. Fair enough.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions?
Motion to table from the...
Second.
Sir? I'm gonna call the roll, Jess. Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Greg McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hartness?
Did you say my name?
Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so table till next month. The next item is the resolution to amend the scheduled rates for sewer. Can I get someone to introduce this one?
All in ruse and go to read only.
How about we just, since we're doing Zoom, how about we just, we got a motion, let's get a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's, all in favor, say aye. All those opposed, no. All in favor? Those opposed? Okay. All right, so Mr. Barton?
Yes, ma'am. An ordinance further amending ordinance number three-five-six of the city of Monticello as previously amended and ordinance number seven-thirty, seven-thirty-five establishing a schedule of charges to be made and collected for facilities afforded and services rendered by the sewer system of the city of Monticello, declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes.
Okay, any questions? And this is the second reading.
Move, you pay me for a time of watch.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to table it till next month. Can, uh, all in favor, say aye, please. Those opposed, no? Okay, we're gonna table that one. The next ordinance, or the next, it's a resolution to amend ordinance number seven-seventy-six for solid waste. And this is the first reading. And this is the first reading for this one. Can I get someone to introduce this, please?
I will.
Thank you, ma'am. I get a second? Oh, no.
I move, suspend rule, read by title only.
Okay. Those in favor of suspending the rules and reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, Mr. Barton, will you read this ordinance, please?
An ordinance further amending ordinance numbers 522 and 770 of the city of Monticello as previously amended, fixing rates to the furnace by the city by a solid waste management system of the city of Monticello, declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
It's good.
Everybody's in agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so can I get a motion to table this for a second reading or?
Motion to table.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling this until May, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is the open burn ordinance. Can I get someone to introduce that, please?
I will.
Thank you, ma'am. And a second? I need a second. Do we wanna read the whole thing?
I move, we suspend the rule, read by title only.
Okay, now we, I need a second.
Second, thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, the ayes have it. Mr. Barton, will you read the title, please, of the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend ordinance number 1981-572 regarding the, regarding the defining and limiting conditions for open burning within the city limits of the city of Monticello.
Okay, questions? And Eric is here. Chief Chisholm is here to answer questions if y'all have some.
He's with you?
Mm-hmm.
I just didn't see his picture up there and I was gonna ask that question. Okay, there he is. Yeah, I've got, I've got a few questions or concerns and I've previously shared some of them with the chief before, but I've had, as late as today, some citizens ask me different things about this. And let me ask you, chief, one of the issues I had was, and I kept hearing from other places too, was the fact that we're calling, having to call in before we burn. I don't see that in this rendition. Is that something that's been eliminated? Or is it still in there?
No, it's in there.
It's in there.
Missing it, I guess.
Section 1, page 3.
Page 3?
Section 1. Section 1, permit required, number 31, holders required to call the Monticello Fire Department before conducting any burns.
Okay, I'm sorry, where are you at?
Page 1, section 1, number 3.
Okay, and I guess what is, what is the, you know, I'm, I'm wanting to know what the reasoning is for having, having to have a citizen to call in because I just have some concerns I'll express to you later, but, but what is the reasoning there?
It was over on the kind of called by the fire bans. We would have the authority to not allow it, due to weather conditions, regardless of whether the fire ban or not, because it's wet outside, but the wind, if it's real windy day and somebody wants to burn their leaves and stuff, they call in and we can advise them that it's too windy to burn, you need to hold off and wait till a day when the wind's not as strong so that you don't have the chance of fire getting out.
So the primary reason for the call is to, to
Get the weather conditions.
Yeah, for us to turn a fire ban on and off. Primary reason for calling for burning is so that we have a mechanism to turn the fire ban on and turn the fire ban off. Is that correct?
It wouldn't actually be a ban, it'd just be, you know, prohibited for burning that day because of the weather, but it wouldn't actually be a ban. A ban would actually be for a longer period of time than just one day.
It also allows them to know where there should be fires or smoke and where there shouldn't be fires and smoke.
And so the weather conditions that would that would not allow someone to burn under would be, I'm assuming, wind? Is there any others?
On a normal call in, the wind is gonna be the primary factor. Now, if it gets to where you're real dry conditions, then we'll look at a fire ban. And this ordinance gives the city the authority to put a fire ban on, other than waiting just for the county judge. Because a lot of times, we have a higher need for a fire ban than the county does because we have such a higher concentration of people at homes and
Right, I understand that and I agree with that. But we're, we're calling in primarily so that we can be told that the wind's too high for you to burn. That's what I'm hearing.
And it's basically, anytime, it's covered in the, you know, under the state fire code 307.2, if you're doing silviculture or wildlife, they're required, any big fires, they're required to call in. Any control burn, the forester, when they do control burns, they call, let dispatch know so that keeps us from being called out, dispatched needlessly to certain areas.
I understand that. For the purposes of this conversation, I'm primarily talking about the, the citizen that is burning leaves or limbs or whatever in his, on his private property. I'm not talking about anything else.
Yes.
That's where I have the issues with, you know, asking a citizen to call in, because we can, we can easily put in to this ordinance that if the wind is above a certain, you know, speed or gust, well, then burning is not allowed.
And that's in there under fire ban on section?
Well, if it's in there, then why do we have to call?
Let, let me give a perfect example. Yesterday, my neighbor across the creek built timber and leaves and got ready to burn and the wind was so strong, he went ahead and threw gasoline on it and ignited it. And I think it makes sense that the fire marshal or the chief needs to have knowledge that someone has gone ahead and started a fire and not have to be running around town trying to figure out who's burning and who's not.
I agree.
I'm not insane.
Here's where I'm coming from, is that I'm not one for putting ordinances and laws on people that, that are, that I don't think are need to be administered, okay? In this, in this case, you know, someone who is going to abide by the law is gonna call in to find out whether they can burn or not, okay? They're gonna do the right thing regardless. The person that you're not gonna know about is the one who's not gonna call in or not about to abide by the law, and this does nothing to address that, so enforcement is not as easy as citizens self-reporting. Enforcement, if we're gonna have an ordinance, I'm not gonna vote for anything that we're not willing to work to enforce, okay? So enforcement has to be, whether it's the fire department or the police department, whoever, when they notice smoke, it's not easy to hide a fire. It's pretty easy to see as we're patrolling around town and to make sure that everything is being done according to local ordinance.
But, Michael, the first step in the process is to file for a permit.
Yeah, and I agree with having a permit, because that's
And all you're doing is confirming that you're gonna do the fire that particular day.
Ask a question, please.
Let me go ahead and tell you, because I was the no vote a while ago. I don't think you should burn within the city limits. I have never lived in a community that allowed burning. This will be the first community I've ever lived in that you can burn in the city limits. So I'm not gonna be, I'm, I'm in the minority, but that, you know, I think Ron and his committee have done a good job working with the chief in writing a very simple ordinance that will allow people to do the right thing.
I have a comment. I hear you, understand that. I'm on the completely opposite side of that. I've never lived in a town where I couldn't burn, okay? And I am not like a lot of different people, you know, I'm speaking personally now, you know, and there's others like me. We have large lots wooded. There's always something to take care of there. And unless I invest in a lot of equipment, I don't have any way of getting those limbs to the street curb for the city to pick up and without, without quitting my day job to do all those things. So to me, it's, it's imperative that I have the right to do that. And, and I would, one other thing I wanted to ask you, chief, and if we need to get this information together and come back next month, that's fine. But I think, you know, I would like to see some statistics on how many fires are caused by people burning leaves, just regular Joes in their front yard, backyard, or wherever, burning. I'm sure there are some, maybe many, I don't know. I would like to see that number. I would help educate.
Can I come in, please?
Because, you know,
Well, I don't think it would do any damage at all.
There needs to be a reason why we're putting a law in place.
Okay, hang on, hang on, two of y'all are talking at the same time. Hang on a second. Michael, go ahead and finish.
Well, what I would say is, you know, I would like to see those statistics and educate myself on that, because if we're gonna put a law in place, ordinance in place, it needs to be an ordinance for a reason, that's serving a purpose, okay? Just not to, you know, to irritate the law.
Can I come in?
About it, but, so can we get those statistics?
Can I come in?
Okay, Ms.
Be helpful for me.
Ms. Hartness, what would you like to say?
I don't think it will hurt anybody to call in. I think that is a safety device. No, we cannot catch everybody. Not everybody will call, but it is a start. And I don't think we need to waste time trying to get information on fires. If the wind is high, the, the fire can spread quickly. And we need to have the, the fire department ready to, they at least need to know about it. So I just think that we need to go ahead with this. There was a time when there was a total ban against burning in Monticello, a total ban. Joyce, the family of Joyce Furlock got that put in, and somehow it's just sort of been eaten away.
And that's the slippery slope I don't wanna go down, okay?
Well, I don't think we can afford it.
That's the reason I'm doing my due diligence and asking these questions, because I don't, once you have an ordinance on the book for whatever the subject matter is, it's the slippery slope with it, where will it end, okay? And there's a, we are a rural town, a rural city, we're a rural state, have always been in Monticello and southeast Arkansas, probably always will be. So there is a need for that.
I have my hand raised.
I see you, Mr. James, you are recognized.
On, on the calling in, the ordinance also addresses that special consideration given for certain identified outdoor events. So, I mean, someone is wanting to burn and they're living close to a city park and there's gonna be some event going on there, they might not know, but by them calling in, they can be notified that, hey, you know, you can't burn because you're within the distance of that park. So, I mean, that's something outside of wind that people might not know. I do have a question regarding permits. If I can get my stuff in while I have the floor, I'd appreciate it. In section one, it says permit required for all permissible burning as listed in section two. And section two, as you read this, is quite a long section, okay? And in there, it has under section two, I guess that's paragraph E, other allowed burning, number five, fires associated with ceremonial or recreational, and lists fire pits, fireplaces, fire rings, and things of that nature. So my question is, we have to have a permit to have a fire pit in our backyard?
By this here, you do.
I mean, I think, I think that's, I think that's a little
Allowed, I believe, the fire, the grills, the outdoor fireplace, everything, they're they're all under the exemption of, of, of open burning, because the permit is for open burning, which is
Not contained.
Leaf piles, limb piles, stuff like that, where wind could easily spread it and cause a fire to get out.
Okay, well, maybe you need according to the language, if I'm reading it correctly, all those items fall under section two. So if, if you're not gonna require a permit for outdoor grilling or fire pits or anything, to me, it looks like it should be rewritten a little bit, make that more clear.
Isn't that not addressed it on page five, number one, allowing those things? Or am I misinterpreting that?
Well, in paragraph five, at the end of it, it says no permit is required for section five, but in paragraph one, where it talks about fires for cooking, barbecues, it does not have that added to it. So it leads you to believe that that's not the case, or at least the way I read it.
Well, the way I read it.
Way I read it, it is.
Immediately under E, it says other allowed burning, and then it says the following types of burning activities are permitted according to the circumstances listed herein.
It says allowed burning.
No, in section one, in section one, in section one, it says permit required, and it says all permissible burning as listed in section two. Now, is that not part of section two?
So basically, you want it to say all per, all permit required for all permissible burning as listed in section two, except for item E.
Yes.
Those things are allowed.
I mean, I, I agree, those things should be allowed. I just think it's not real clear the way it's currently written.
Okay, so if we add that, does that clarify it for you?
I think so.
Okay.
And then, on, unregard the permit, someone had mentioned to me, somebody called me today and said at one point, they understood that if you acquire a permit for your residence, that that permit is, is good and you only have to apply for it once. So on frequency of permits, do you have to apply for a permit every time you want to burn something? Or is it a permit that you obtain for your residence and then that's, that's good from then on?
From then on, it's educational. I mean, the permit list works, allowed to burn, and the timeframe, and basically laying out that you need to stay with to have means to, of extinguishment, because 90% of the time, when we go to a fire that we get called on, we have to tell them to put it out. They always give the same answer, is they didn't know, they didn't know they couldn't burn this. I pulled up on one other day, there was a dishwasher, a garage door, a meter loop, all kinds of stuff on this pile of burn. And the answer was, he didn't know, or sometimes we get the answer that someone told them they couldn't burn it. So by giving them a permit listing what they can and can't burn, it takes out all the doubt as to who told them what, because it's clearly written and they got it from the fire department, so there's no misunderstanding on what's allowed.
It is a huge opportunity for education.
And if the permit continues, it even brings in more support for the phone call. Because the permit, if you're saying it extends and you don't have to come every time you build a fire, then that means there's even more reason for that phone call.
And sometimes, there's several times around, you know, they require an annual renewal of the permit. Some of them require a permit for every burn, and we're not trying to go that far, just, you know, want them to educate, want to educate people what they can and can't burn, and what they have out there with them when they are burning.
Chief, is there a timeframe on when that call has to be made? I mean, you call the day before, do you call that day five minutes before, or what is that, how's that work?
We prefer it the day of, because the weather conditions can change, you know, so if you call the day before and get permission and then the wind picks up, because the guy on duty this afternoon, he may not look at the weather and see what tomorrow's gonna be doing. So you call, you know, the day you're gonna burn, you have a current weather.
Okay.
At this time of year, the weather seems to change every hour.
Does that include weekends?
There's been somebody at the station. There's somebody at the station twenty-four seven. And if if they don't answer, if they're out washing the trucks, or you know, away from the station, there's an answering machine on the lines at Central, you can leave a message. And I'm not sure you don't have to, you can't start your fire if you left a message. You know, we're willing to work with everybody. You know, it's not one of these things that, we're not going to make you sit there and hold on burning, because we're out doing our our job and our other duties. If the fire gets out, and Utah made an effort, you know, we're not going to come out there and write you a ticket, you know, we're not, we're not trying to find people or site before. We're just trying to educate them and get everybody to know what they what they can and can't do.
Hey, Chief, other than the, other than the restriction of fifty feet away from a structure on, you know, on your personal property, is there any other restrictions as far as where you can burn on your property? I mean, I know you can't do it in ditches and things like that.
If it's under, you know, like that's
And here's the rea, this is why I'm asking, is because I had somebody call me and said the way, and I don't see it in there. They said the way they read that is that they could not burn within twenty feet of their property line. And his concern was, his property was only sixty foot wide. And if you take twenty off each side, that leaves twenty in the middle. And then he's got structures in the middle of the property, and it left him very little with any room to burn.
That twenty feet from the property line is under the development, construction, and site improvement burden. That's not
That's why I saw that. So that was, that doesn't apply to the to the individual on his own personal property. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's, that's if you're developing a lot, clean up a lot, we don't want you burning, you know, keep it on that property. It's got to be some many feet from the property.
His burn pile could be just a few feet from his property line.
As long as it's fifty feet, or if it's a small pile, three feet diameter, two feet tall, it can be within twenty-five feet of the structure, if you keep the pile small.
No, I'm talking about the property line.
Yes, as long as it's, as I say, as long as it's not a, under development or construction, as long as it's not under that section C, then yes.
Right, I understand, I understand.
Eric, in that, Eric, in that same section.
Can we go back to section two?
Hang on, Mr. Pierre, let let Mr. Craig finish.
Okay.
Eric, in that same section, why must the parcel be an acre or greater? What's the, what's the reasoning behind that?
I think that's how the section that the planning commission put it in.
Where are you at, Craig?
Number five, in that same section, page four. I mean, is that saying that if it's a half acre lot, you can't burn?
Let me read the whole thing, Mr. Craig.
Okay. That's what it's saying.
Yes, like that, that was put in by the planning commission, that and the smoke-free zone. I don't know what their reasoning was on that. Above it, it gives you the, you know, parameters of what size pile and everything you do. The only thing I can figure why they put that in there is, you have a pile fifteen, you know, feet tall or something, and that's, keep it from radiant heat, maybe catching something else, or causing damage to somebody else's property, if it's a very small lot.
This is the first reading, is right?
Yes, first reading. Mr. Pierre, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah. Let's say that I'm mowing my lawn, and I have grass, and I trim the hedge, the bush. Could I not burn those? Do I have to get a pit? Do I have to make a call?
We got that permit and make the phone call, yes, sir.
Yes. You make the phone call, but I can't burn that.
Yeah, as long as it's not too windy, and your pile's not too big, and it's
Okay.
And you have a permit.
Oh, you have to call and
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I won't clear my house.
Yeah. Yep, okay.
Well, and so that, so that we're clear for the public, I'm not sure they can read all this in the amount of time that we're having this meeting. You can burn without a permit for grilling, clearing, for construction. You can burn storm debris. You can burn for, what's number four, in instruction. So that's fire department. You can burn for ceremonial fires, fireplaces, fire rings, fire pits, bonfires, you can do all that. No permit is required for all that. As long as you stay within the guidelines that create a safe environment to burn.
You know, I wouldn't have to, like I say, I'm glad this is the first reading. Look at this, because like I said, when you look at E, and it said other allowed burning, it then it goes back and tell you with the discretion of the fire department, allowed, but then you got to get permission. So that means it's sort of like contradicting. So you can burn it, but you're going to get permission to burn it. I mean, I like this ordinance in a sense, especially when it comes to the part about burning in the ditches and different things. But I think that's a lot of problems in my neighborhood, why the water don't flow. Because people have been burning in the ditches, and they're running the streets, and all that didn't settle down. But like I said, this is the first reading. And I think, you know, if we look at it a little closer, and more input from people, then we can fine tune it.
Well, it is the first reading. So we do have plenty of time. Are there, are there any other questions?
Maybe the tip will be fixed by then. We can put it out on the street.
That's what I'm hoping to. And the other, the other thing that I'd like to say is that, you know, maybe next month, we can meet face to face, the public can come to the meeting. And if it doesn't happen next month, and maybe the next month, that gives three readings, that gives hopefully plenty of time for citizens to come and voice their concerns. And and I'm going to stop and ask Ashley, is there anybody who has commented on Facebook Live, or had a question or anything?
Mayor Chase, I'm monitoring that. And I believe most of the questions that have been asked, they've been addressed. And I think just we may need to make sure these ordinances are available via the media, or via the city Facebook page, so that we can read them in their entirety, that they're always available to the public. You know, if you want to contact City Hall with an email, or something like that, we'll get you a, get you a copy for for you to read them.
Okay, so so are you sure that all those questions or concerns have been addressed?
I believe so. Right now, there's no specific question that has not been addressed.
Okay. All right. You're ready to wait? We're going to table this till next month?
Yeah, we table this till next month.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No? Okay, tabled till next month? Thank you, Chief. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is resolution for a lien. Can I get someone to introduce this resolution, please?
I'll introduce it. And move to suspend the rules and read the title on.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No? Okay, Mr. Barton, will you read the resolution, please?
Resolution certifying balance owed for lien purposes to Monticello, City Ordinance number six thirty, regarding six fifteen Hill Press Drive, Monticello, Arkansas.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Move to pass the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Jess, will you please call the roll?
Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution passes. Next is a resolution for another lien. Can I get someone to introduce this one?
I'll introduce and suspend the rules and read only.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? No? Okay, Mr. Barton, will you please read the resolution?
Resolution certifying balance owed for lien purposes to Monticello, City Ordinance number six thirty, regarding thirty-one and three fifty, Texas Street.
Any questions or comments?
I move, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Jess, will you please call the roll?
Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
And Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, almost finished. Next is a resolution to amend the Alcohol Beverage Control Fund budget. Can I get someone to introduce this?
I will.
I'll introduce. Move to suspend the rules and read the title on.
Thank you, Mr. James. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Those opposed? No? Okay, Mr. Barton?
A resolution to amend two thousand twenty Alcohol Beverage Control Fund budget.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
Is this is this for the purchase of the matching for the computers for the tow cars?
No, this is for, I think this is for body cams.
It is.
Body cam?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Second.
Thank you. Second. Jess, will you please call the roll?
Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yeah.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
And Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is another resolution. Can I get someone to introduce this one?
I'll introduce. Move to suspend the rules and read the title on.
Thank you, Mr. James. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Those opposed? No? Okay, Mr. Barton, will you please read the resolution?
A resolution authorizing City of Monticello warrant service fund.
Any questions or discussion?
Now, on this, what exactly, this is like when they serve a warrant, usually the county does it, the city is going to start doing it?
The county does some, the, there are, I believe, individual warrant service.
Right.
So, yeah. I mean, we're, we're asked to do some of this anyway sometimes. And when we do, we just don't get paid for it.
Can y'all hear me?
We can now.
Okay, because can you see me? You can't see me. Okay, well, Jason's in here with me. If you have any questions for him.
Okay. Only question I have, I was trying to clarify, is this the same thing that the sheriff department normally does? Or in, I have seen cases where individuals serve not warrants, but what do you call it, collections and stuff? Is this what this is?
Well, it, what, what you have is you have the city, city cases, and you have county cases. And the city cases are actually the ones that are written by city officers. And during the course of that, sometimes people fail to appear in court, or they have old fines. Those are considered city cases. And it is our responsibility, as well as the sheriff's office, to serve. We can serve city and county warrants, and the county can serve city and county warrants as well. And the state, any, any law enforcement officer can serve these warrants. The issue comes in is that the state authorizes us, and actually, under, I believe it is fourteen fifty-two, two oh two, says that the, that the chief of police shall impose a warrant, a fee for serving the warrant. Because by the time you figure an officer driving around, trying to locate someone who's failed to appear in court, we're using city money, city vehicles, gas. And when we get a citation, right, if the officer writes a citation for the warrant, you've got the cost of that citation. We haven't in the past, for whatever reason, the city hasn't collected the warrant service fee that's authorized by the state. Further down in the resolution, under, I believe it's, well, it may be fourteen fifty-two, two oh two as well, but but it authorizes the the chief of police and his or her deputies to charge the same amount as authorized by law for the sheriffs, that sheriff can can charge as well. And basically, this has just given us the same rights as the sheriff's office, as far as collecting, or any sheriff's office in the state, as far as collecting a fee for serving the warrants.
Hey, Chief Bakers?
Yes, sir.
Do you know if the sheriff's department currently charges the same?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if Drew County does. I know surrounding counties do. Ashley County, for example, charges the fifty dollar fee. Those, those, those fees are set forth in the law for what each process service, whether it's a subpoena, or whether it's whatever, what each one can can charge. And the warrant service fee is fifty dollars. And this is for city warrants only. We're not going to be charging this for county warrants. Those are county problems, and we'll help serve them. But those are things that the county can can do if they so choose. But this is just for the city warrants on city cases in 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 Monticello.
So you're not going to be setting the price, the state knows that?
Yes, sir. It's, I believe it's in, and Mr. Barton may correct me, but I believe it's in fourteen fifty-two, two oh two, in Arkansas code annotated, that sets the prices for, not just this, but it sets prices for everything. And fifty dollars is your standard warrant service fee throughout the state.
Actually, I think it's a separate statute, but it's referred to in fourteen fifty-two.
Right, right, right.
It's, it is set by statute.
It's twenty-one, six, three oh seven, Mr. Barton. It's, it says, for serving city warrants only, the chief of police or his or her deputy shall be entitled to the fees allowed to a sheriff under twenty-one, six, three oh seven, for similar services and similar cases.
Which is the statute referred to in fourteen fifty-two, two oh two.
Correct. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Any other questions?
I move, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Jess, will you call the roll, please?
Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre? Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hartness?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution passes.
Okay, I don't know if it's too late. I don't mean to be out of order. But can we get a fee on this, what the fee is?
Oh, you want it on the written in the paper?
Yes.
Written in the resolution?
I mean, I, I mean, it says, I'm expecting where it is, that ACA fourteen fifty-two, two oh two, further authorizes fees for such service or process. So I think it clearly references state code as to what the fee will be. I think putting it in here, if the state changes the fee, then we've got to as to what the fee will be. I think, putting it in here, if the state changes the fee, then we've got to redo this resolution. So I, I see that's overkill.
But it's not overkill. We would know what the fee is instead of saying it's made up. I mean, just say what the fee is.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever the current fee is.
If we say it in the resolution, Mr. Leonard, then Joe, Mr. Meeks is correct. We would have to go back and change this every time the state changed the fee.
The state sets the fee.
It's saying that you can collect the fees, but it don't say what the fees are. I mean, it says you can collect fees.
Well, look at the second paragraph. It says, "Whereas said Arkansas Code Annotated 1452-202 further authorizes fees for such service of process," and that means that the state sets the fee, and that we are gonna, I mean, that, it's implied that we're gonna use that fee.
I don't know if it says the fees, or it says you authorized to take, to charge the fees. I'm just asking, what are the fees? It says that you authorized to take fees, but what are the fees?
Well, it authorizes the fee of $50. It doesn't say that because every time the state changed, we would have to change our resolution.
And, uh, another point on that is the chief of police has the authority to do this. The statute gives it to him. You guys are gracing it, but, but it's my opinion that he could do that without this resolution. This recognizes that that process exists, and then establishes the fund, what he's going to do with the money if he collects it. So I think you've got two points. Putting $50 in this ordinance, if that's the will of the council, because that's what it is, and it's established by statute. The point that has been made is if, at some point, five years from now, 10 years from now, the legislature moves that to $75 or whatever, then we would be stuck at $50 unless we remember to go back and amend it. This allows it to be whatever it's going to be. But again, this is, the statute authorized the police to make that charge. He can do that, going to the council, but he can do that. This establishes the fund that he's supposed to put, where he's, where you guys are instructing him, put that money.
Okay, okay. I mean, I think you hit on it, what I'm saying, but I'm, what I'm asking is, what is the fee?
$50.
A set fee. That way, this person will stop, and that fee may be $100. The next person might be 200 or $50. What is the fee? What I'm asking?
The, the, under the 216307, which is Arkansas, Arkansas law, it is section, uh, give me two seconds here. It is section 14. It says the fee for serving a warrant or order of arrest from any court is $50.
Okay, that's all I'll ask.
Got you.
And, Mr. Leonard, this, I don't know if this was a point of your concern or not, it's $50 per service. It doesn't matter what the charge is, what, what, how grave it is, how much money's involved, it's $50 per service.
Now, that, that answered the question. That's all I wanna know, what was the fee?
$50, whether it's, or how serious.
Okay, that's all I wanna know, what was the fee? It doesn't say $50.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good.
Mayor?
Did someone call my name?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
I move we amend the agenda to, uh, for the property cleanup, um, fund.
Thank you, sir. All those, uh, it, can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
Well, we're going to property cleanup.
We vote on the resolution?
I'm lost now.
We just amended, we amended the agenda to move funds into the property cleanup account so that Mr. Rogers has some money. This is what we discussed in finance. So that Mr. Rogers has some money to move forward for the, before all these liens get paid.
Okay, I mean, we were talking about warrants, and then you went to liens. I mean, I mean, property liens. I ain't know what you was doing.
Well, the, the warrant service fee had already passed.
Okay.
So we-
Okay, I'm, I'm fine. You know, I just went from A to A.
Are we fixing to talk about that lien right now, Paige?
Finish out that agenda.
We're talking about the property cleanup money, moving those funds.
Are we gonna do that before we do, um, Adam?
We've already done. Oh, no, I missed that. I don't have that paperwork, sorry. Uh, next, we need, sorry, y'all. Um, we've already amended the agenda so we can move on, and then we can come back. Authorization to purchase two dash cameras for the Monticello Police Department. I don't have any paperwork on that.
I move adoption.
Second.
Uh, will you call the roll, Jess?
Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
This one?
Yeah, yeah.
Michael James?
Okay.
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
And Claudia Hardness?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh-
Mike, you got your cameras?
Mayor, if I could just let, let the council know, just, just real clear, just what happened in the minutes. On the dash cameras, uh, we're gonna lay out the initial funds for that, but we have obtained a grant that's gonna total, it's gonna cover the entire amount. We just have to pay that amount out first, submit that paperwork to the state police, and, and the city's gonna be reimbursed for the full amount on that. Just, just so the council will know, we're, we're gonna out, out the initial money, but we're getting it all back as soon as we submit a paid receipt, uh, for the dash cameras.
That's great.
Great.
Okay. Okay, um, so now we've amended the agenda for the property cleanup monies. Vicky?
Was it $5, Kenny?
Was it $10,000?
It'll be, um, $10,000 from the 1998 one cent sales tax fund, and it'll come out of expense number 5970, which is transferred to property cleanup fund, and then the funds will be deposited into property cleanup condemnation fund checking.
I move we do what Vicky just said.
Second.
Okay, will you call the roll, Jess?
Joe Meeks?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Do you think- Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Jack Lassiter?
Yes.
Craig McCray?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
And Claudia Hardness?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I would like to inform you all, too, that I found a Blue and You, uh, grant that has no matching money available, um, and it fit with the trail design, uh, lake. Uh, it, this was a grant that needed forward movement in a project. Um, anyway, so that grant has been applied for, I believe. Uh, we'll, we'll get, we'll have plenty of opportunity to discuss it when we, when we can meet face to face again. Um, also, I contacted our sidewalk engineer because I found another opportunity for some more money, and we're looking at putting, uh, when the sidewalks get finished on 425, we're looking at doing sidewalks from the library to Oakland, I believe, um, and then to Sadi Johnson or Jordan Park. So we'll have plenty of opportunity to, to discuss that, too, before we have to make any decisions, but, um, you know, I'm looking for, during, what little bit of downtime we have now. It's not a tremendous amount, but when we do have, and we do have some, I'm looking for grants and, and, uh, looking for monies that we can do things like that. The other thing I'd like to say is that our Public Works Crew, our Police Department, our Fire Department, um, our Finance, Water Department, everybody, our Parks, if I didn't say them already, um, even this, even the Senior Citizens Center, um, has gone above and beyond, um, their duties. During COVID-19, everybody has had to, to really drastically change their work habits and their hours and things like that. And then we had the storm on Easter evening that blew everything out of the water. Um, and I just wanna say publicly that these people that work for you all are doing a fabulous job, and they have not complained. They have, and many of them showed up at work and did whatever was required when they had damage to their own personal properties. Um, and I actually, that's, this is my article in the paper this week. It's about how hard they've worked and what a good job they've done, and what great attitudes they had. So I just wanna say that publicly. Um, and Ashley, is there, are there any more comments on Facebook Live that we need to discuss?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, what?
Um, apparently there was something that was not covered with the, uh, burn ordinance. Um, it's not up to anyone's discretion. Um, the public knows our due diligence on making sure that these materials are available to the public. I'm trying to read here and see if there's an actual question. Um, we have a comment from a citizen that says, "During COVID-19, the city council needs to do a better job on ensuring ordinances and minutes are readily available to the public." Um, I'd like to comment on that. All you have to do is, is call, um, City Hall. Uh, we're open from 7:30 to 4:30. We'd be happy to get anyone, any copies of anything like that. Um, the comment also says, "I encourage the city council to please do your due diligence and review the burn ordinance. The language is misleading, one-sided, and needs to be fixed. It opens the door for a certain population to be targeted."
And, and I hope that that citizen, uh, if we were able to meet in person next month, I hope that that citizen will, will come to a meeting and actually discuss their concerns with the ordinance. Uh, I feel the ordinance is very, uh, uh, clearly worded, and, and is in no way targeting any certain population.
I, I would also be interested in knowing, um, how that population's targeted and, and what specifics they're, they're concerned about. I mean, I, I think that, maybe I can speak for everybody. I don't know, you're perfectly welcome to speak yourself, but, um, there's, the only target for this burn ordinance that I have experienced at all, or interpreted as I read it, was to keep, um, safety and information flowing. Uh, and, and, so I'm, I'm not sure, you know, I'd like to know specifically what they're concerned about, then we could address that. Until, until we know, we, we, everybody'd just be guessing, so. Anybody else have any comments?
Um, another comment has been made, saying this person called four times today. Hey, um, I'd like to point out that if, if you can't get us via phone, uh, we do have emails, website, and we do have a Facebook page that, um, is monitored daily, and there are, there are several means of communications of, of reaching us if you can't get us on the phone.
Well, and we all have, um, uh, voicemail.
Correct.
That, that we answer, so I don't, I'm not sure.
Do we post the minutes and the ordinances on the website? City's website?
You wanna answer that, Ashley?
It's been a little spotty in the past. Um, I assure you that tomorrow I will make it a top priority to make sure that those things are available in some shape, form, or fashion. Um, but like I said, I have people call all the time, and they ask for copies of ordinances or resolutions, or minutes, or things like that. They're always made available at no charge to the public.
And we do request things to be put on our website all the time. Um, but our requests are not always honored. Anything else, Ashley?
No. Check the Facebook page tomorrow. There'll be PDFs.
And no other comments?
Not that I can see.
Okay. All right, does anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Mayor, I don't have anything to say, but I do have a que- question. Is there any swimming pool update, or were you gonna address that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I have a, a pool update. Um, and it's, it's pretty good news. Um, the liner is being put in, uh, even as we speak. Um, all the, we, we, you know, found another leak that y'all didn't even know about, pressurized the lines again, um, and found that leak. They fixed that for free. Um, because I said, well, if it's over $2,500, I've got to have approval from the council. Um, but, all of those lines are put in, all of the holes are filled, not with concrete yet. Um, when the guy came to, uh, tear out the liner and replace the liner, the steps going into the pool from the shallow end are completely, they're, they're ruined. There's, I mean, you can't attach anything to them. They're, it's just concrete that's completely breaking up. Um, if you tried to attach something to those steps, they would just fall apart. So the steps are gonna be redone. Um, and we don't, I don't have a price on that yet, but it's, uh, Gerald went to get the lumber so that I could form those. Um, I think he had it there this morning. Um, it'll take him three or four days to form and pour those steps, and then the guy will be able to finish the liner. And in the meantime, he's working on all the, uh, jets and, and gutters, you know, putting the liner in around and all that, and, um, so it's, it's gonna be ready probably in two weeks. And nobody can swim.
Got a comment, Paige.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would just encourage those of you that are in the, the city offices, to figure out a way, and I've got some ideas, I'll be glad to share them, to figure out a way that we can have next month's meeting in person together. I think there's some, I know there's some things that I've thought of that we could implement and still practice social distancing and, and keep everybody safe.
Okay.
But I just think we're with a, you know, a lot of things that we're talking about, and looking at some of the comments that are on Facebook, too, and some comments that were made to me in person, that, you know, there's a lot of people that would like, would like to be at some of these meetings, have the access to be there, I think. So I just think we need to do our due diligence if we, as possible.
Well, I, I agree. I understand the importance, and I don't like not having the citizens here. I am following the guidelines set forth by the Municipal League of Arkansas, who has taken guidance from the governor, who's taken guidance from the president.
So we can't until the governor says so? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I, yeah, it's not, it's, it's, would be greatly frowned upon. I'm, you know, I'm not sure, and, and they have gone as far as to make this format, um, legal. I mean, they've, they've moved in that direction, so, um, you know, and, and I don't like it. I would much rather meet in person. And I thought, you know, we could meet in person, maybe if we did it at Sadi Johnson Building. We could sit far enough away from each other. But when you start bringing people in, the citizens in, it's, we have the same problem. There's, it's not, that space is not wide enough to-
Obviously have to be limited in nature.
Right, you'd have to limit the number of people, and you'd have to determine exactly where they sit or stand. Yes, Mr. Meeks?
There was a comment on Facebook that, uh, Hamburg City Council met at their city park last night, so that's an option.
That is an option.
It's an apathy.
Yep, that is an option. If the weather's nice, we could do that. All right, well, we'll consider that next time. Um, is, is everybody willing to, uh, go with that plan as a, uh, an alternative last minute to everybody go home and, in case there's weather's bad or something?
Yeah, bring me a chair.
As long as it's by the guideline.
What, Cedric?
As long as it's by the CDC guidelines, I don't care.
Okay, what'd you say, Mr. Meeks?
Bring me a chair.
Okay. I guess we- We probably made under the pavilion.
Yeah, don't forget. Don't forget that we have an elderly member of this council. I'm not sure who it is.
And me with a bad foot. We could do the pavilion.
But now, you know, the legislature met in, uh, Stevens Center, basketball.
Right.
You know, and that's a possibility also, I would think. Maybe. Don't know.
We could use somebody's gym.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll, I'm happy to consider those options. Um, anybody else?
Mayor, one, one final thought.
Mayor, one, one final thought. Um, in the coming weeks, uh, restrictions are gonna be gradually, uh, lifted. And I, I'd like to see this council and, and the mayor's office really emphasize the importance and need for Monticellonians to support other Monticellonians, to shop at home, to help some of our businesses, uh, recover that have been affected by this, um, pandemic. And I just kinda wanted to place that thought out there and as, uh, as restrictions become, uh, lifted in the coming weeks.
That's a great thought. And we, I have no problem doing that. It is very important, and we, we survive because of our small businesses, so. Anybody else?
Fill out your census.
Oh, yeah, fill out your census, please.
We're adjourned.
We're below the national average.
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.